Good evening. Welcome to the Marion Common Council meeting. Today is November 4th at 7:00 PM in Marion City Hall. And glad to see everyone here tonight. We're going to call this meeting to order and begin with prayer. I'll lead with prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts, thankful for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask of you grant this council wisdom in every decision and discussion we have tonight. Lead us with integrity, fairness, and compassion for all of our citizens. And may unity guide our conversations and respect shape our actions. Bless our city, our leaders, and those who call it home. In your name we pray, amen. And then pledge allegiance led by our first deputy clerk, Ayesha Richard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Excellent job, Ayesha. Thank you for that. All right, we'll begin with roll call. Madam Deputy Clerk. Or is a... Actually, first of all, I want to say welcome back Debbie Goodman, our city clerk. Everyone give her a round of applause. She's back. Shouldn't forget, it's been awhile. We haven't seen you. I had to check your ID in the door and make sure you still work here. So, we're just really glad you're back and you're doing much, much better. So, it's really nice to see you. Ayesha did a phenomenal job, but it's not the same without you. So, welcome back. So, who do we talk to tonight? Advise me of that one. Who's taking roll call?
Sorry.
There we go.
Here.
Marshall. Fordice.
Here.
Brunner.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Calgill.
Here.
McKinley.
Here. All right, we're going to do the Community Spotlight first off. And tonight, we are featuring the History Center at the Marion Public Library and featuring Kelsey Winters and Jamie Pitts. And ladies, if you want to go ahead and come on up, maybe it's just... Oh, both of you are here. Great. Fantastic. Come all the way up to the front here. We like to do everything in the front. You're going to talk to everybody, yeah. You get to be in the spotlight. So, go ahead and you can both stand on each side if you'd like. And yeah, so tonight's Community Spotlight, Kelsey reached out to me awhile ago and really wanted to kind of get the word out again about the History Center at the Marion Public Library. We talked for a little bit and I'm fascinated. I haven't been there yet, but I'm intrigued and now I want to go. So, I'll let you ladies do the talking. They have a lot to share and we're going to learn about the History Center at the library. Go ahead. Yeah, who wants to go first?
We will try and keep it brief. But thank you for the opportunity. I want to thank the council members for inviting us and for giving us this opportunity. I want to share a brief update on the ARPA-funded projects with the library. Since you were so gracious to give us funding, I just want to let you know that the project was completed in August. And we are going to move forward with Phase Two of improvements to the History Center. So, we're sincerely grateful for the funding. We just appreciate your support in making these projects possible since that kind of goes outside of our operating funds, right? So, the Marion Public Library is a unique entity. It is one of two libraries that have a museum. And so, we preserve the history of the city of Marion and also the surrounding areas. And we're just very proud of our History Center with all of our resources and our museum. And I'm going to really just let Kelsey talk about what she is working on, the things going on in the museum, and her special projects that she is in charge of. So, I'll let Kelsey take it from here.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you, Jamie. Thank you, everyone, for being here today and for hearing what we have to share. We have a lot going on at the History Center and it's just been a joy to get to work there for the past few years and connect with the community. We've got a great staff. Like Jamie mentioned, the History Center, if you haven't heard of it, we're a small local history museum. We're a department of the Marion Public Library. And the History Center building really houses two different departments. So, the first apartment is the museum. That's what I'm here representing today. The second department is our Indiana History and Genealogy Room, and they're an incredible public resource. And I'd like to take a minute to just kind of highlight what they offer to the community. They have over a million local history records in their database, along with lots of resources you would not be able to find other places. They have overseen the digitization of all of Marion's newspapers from 1867 to current day and kind of helped run that database through newspapers.com. You can access all of those at the library. And they also take in research and genealogy requests from all over the world. So, really kind of anywhere people can put in requests. And I believe they're second to Allen County in the state of Indiana. So, as far as what they're able to handle and the depth of research they're able to assist with, it really is an amazing asset for Marion to have here. But I would be remiss if I didn't focus on the museum for a little bit. So, our museum, for a museum of our size, actually has a very extensive collection. We have over 30,000 objects and over 7,000 photographs housed in our museum. We also have some collections, an extensive collection of additional photographs that we're working on processing right now. We have multiple exhibits in our museum. Some of the main ones, the topics that they cover are the history of the gas boom. And we also have a wonderful exhibit called Welcome to Weaver that highlights the history of Weaver, which was a free black settlement southwest of Marion. Really incredible community, great information highlighted in that exhibit as well. And we just opened at the beginning of this calendar year, an exhibit called Home of the Hog, Marion's Motorcycle Legacy, that is about the history of two landmark motorcycle races that took place in Marion in 1919 and 1920. And they share the story of how Marion became the home of the Harley Hog. And the way that Harley Hogs got their name of Hog was actually in Marion at one of those races. So, I don't want to spoil the story for everyone, but it's a great, great exhibit if anyone wants to come check it out. And we do also host a couple of traveling exhibits throughout the year. This year, we had one in the spring, one in the fall. We'll be doing the same next year. And they kind of highlight broader Indiana history. And then we find ways to tie it to our collection or our community through displays and events. We are really collaboratively-minded organizations, so we maintain strong partnerships with other local history organizations, like the Grant County Historical Society, and Save Our Stories, which is our historic preservation organization. And really are open to collaboration with other community partners. If anyone has an idea, please bring it to us. And we can't promise we can always say yes, but we'll at least think of it.
I have an idea. Sorry to interrupt. I have a brain. I just came... We have a gentleman over there named Jim Brunner.
Yeah.
And if you wanted to start a sports section, he's your resource right there. So, there's your sports library for Marion.
Jim is going to give you a call.
There you go. Add the east wing of... Sorry, I shouldn't have said that. Did not mean that. We'll call the west wing of the History Center with Jim.
Yeah, that would be great. Yes, thankful that we have a new roof for you to work with.
Yeah, you need to come see me. We got a lot of artifacts at that radio station, so...
That's wonderful.
There you go, sorry. Go ahead.
No, you're fine. We do offer a variety of free public programs through the museum, really that appeal to all ages. So, the next one we have coming up, I just want to highlight, is Christmas at the Carnegie. We do that every year. And it... Yes, the flyer is up there. It is a part of the City of Marion's Miracle on Third and Fourth Street event this year on November 22nd from 12:00 to 3:00 PM. And we'll have all sorts of things. It's a very family-friendly event, so kind of geared towards kids and families with that one. And then finally, that was the gist of what I had to share, but I did want to pass around to the council members. We have some flyers for you all. I'm going to let Jamie take those and pass those out. And then I did bring an object from our museum. We thought it would be fun to bring something for you all to see, to kind of highlight. This is one of our favorites to bring out when we do presentations. This is a telegram that was sent on April 7th, 1960, from John F. Kennedy, who was then a Senator of Massachusetts, to Jack Edwards, who was the mayor of Marion at the time in the 60s. And I'm just going to read it so everyone can hear. It's addressed to Mayor Jack Edwards, City Hall, Marion, Indiana. And he says, "The reception I received in Marion is finest I have received in any community in America. My warm thanks to you all, Jack Kennedy." So, I'm going to start this down here. And then if you want to pass it around.
Councilman Brunner, do you remember when that came in?
Yeah.
That telegram?
He was just out of college.
He's just out of college. We loved him.
I know you're joking, but we did actually give a presentation recently where one of the men of the presentation was on the steps of the courthouse when JFK walked in and he greeted him directly and said, "Shouldn't you boys be in school?" As he was walking into the courthouse. So, there are people in our community who were there.
So, this is the original?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's the original telegram.
My sweaty palms. That is really cool. And it's just so interesting to see like just how things used to be typed and... Yeah, that's really, really cool. All right, well, anything else you'd like to share or... That was fantastic. Yeah, I encourage everyone to go check out the History Center and it's very, very intriguing. Whether you're from here or not, this city is full of lots of rich history. So, yeah, well, thank you so much. Everyone give them a round. Yeah.
Just a question, just a question. Kelsey?
You can't go anywhere yet.
So, tell me again, remind me again, how many photographs did you rescue from the Chronicle Tribune?
I knew someone was going to ask about that. So, and we have a wide collection of photos from the Chronicle Tribune newspaper. We were able to go in in December. We already had some. We're able to go in in December. And all in all, between negatives and photo prints, we have over 600,000 photos from the Chronicle Tribune newspaper. Like I said, our accession to museum collection is 7,000 photographs. So, that was an insane number of objects to add into our museum. But we have had some great volunteers who've worked on it over the past year. And I'm happy to say that the photo prints, which number over 10,000, have now almost fallen in that, in a searchable index for us to be able to find information for people. So, if anyone has public history topics or questions about the history of Marion or Grant County and want to know, please come visit us. We have photos or research information as well.
Great. Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate it. So, I'd love to get a photo with both of you. Do give them the heads up that that's mandatory. Would you like to get the word out?
Marty, you're up.
I'll come in. Come on in, right in the middle here. Yeah.
I'm trying.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Yeah, absolutely.
I'll come in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do we have the telegraph over here or did Jamie?
Hey, hey. I don't see... I have stuff in my bag. It's right there on the bell.
16 years old.
There we go.
I would love to chat more. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Hold on. All right, moving on to the city employee spotlight. Today, we are featuring not just one employee, but we are featuring an entire department. And I'd like to invite anyone that came, all of... I'd like to see a good group in here from the street and citywide maintenance department. Come on up. There's... I know some of you are in here. Come on up. Come all the way up here to the front. And while they're on their way up, I just wanted to share a few words. All the way up to the front here, we're going to put you in the TV lights. How about that? Come on up, gentlemen and ma'am. I was seeing the front. I'm working my way back. Well, welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, Randy, for coming. So, I was... Regina reached out to me and pointed out a few really great things that have happened with our street and citywide maintenance department. Randy, as well, shared some things. And it's not normal. We do an entire department, but this was one where this was an absolute team effort. And as Regina said, there's no I in team. And I'm just going to read what I wrote. It kind of summarized what was given to me. But Randy and his team have worked tirelessly to keep the city well-maintained year-round. But recently, they achieved a historic milestone by completing the MS4 audit with 100% and no deficiencies. That's the first time in Marion's history after addressing a few issues within two days. And they also earned another perfect score on their annual sprinkler inspection, thanks to teamwork and collaboration with Chief Carr. Their dedication, commitment, and teamwork exemplify excellence and pride in serving this community. And we couldn't be more proud because we know it is a team effort. Randy doing a great job, but I know if I would say, "Randy, what's the secret to this?" He would say, "All my employees and everyone that works well together." So, Randy, would you like to share anything?
You said it. It doesn't happen without them.
I put the words, yeah.
Not everybody's here, but it doesn't happen without those guys. Thank the mayor for letting us build this team, the council for backing every choice we've made. Without that, it doesn't happen.
Well, we've been definitely impressed with all the work that you're doing and the rest of you. I know this was a day off, I think, for most of you, all of you.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you got the day off. Hope you were able to get caught up on some stuff today, but we appreciate you taking your time to come in tonight and being recognized. So, you know, I didn't want to just pick one of you. And I appreciate... I just want to give credit to Regina for really reaching out. She advocated for your department. And at first, I think I misunderstood and I think she was... I saw your name and then I replied about featuring you. And then she's like, "No, the whole department, like, it's an I team. No, no, it's you." But it was like, this audit and everything, first in Marion's history is a big deal. This is what they, you know, live and breathe every single day. And we can't keep these... This city afloat without the hard work that you all put in. So, thank you so much. Any council members want to share anything before we get a photo?
That's... I mean, the perfect scores, that's amazing, you guys. And for the first time in the history of our city, that's something to be proud of. I'm very proud of you guys, honestly. You guys do a phenomenal job. Sounds like Big Ray just got him, but you know.
Yeah, that's in your hands, my man. All right. Anyone else would like to share anything that's here tonight?
We got good people down there and we've got to get... She rolled in. She's a big asset. She turned things around, you know. A man running the show, yeah.
Well, good. Could you guys... Would you mind just saying your name, introducing yourself, going around?
I'm Billy Joe Bowler. I did 33 years. I retired two years ago. I come back a year ago.
Well, welcome back. Thank you, yeah.
I'm David Reyes. I used to start last year in November, so I'm almost one year. So, not very old, but I'll be here.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Brett Morris. Been here a little over a year and a half.
These guys got a wide range of skills that, I mean, from electrical, deployment, to carpentry. These guys get it done.
Good. Next. You're up next?
I'm Regina. I've been with the department going on two years.
I'm AJ Pibby. I've been with the department for like a year and a half.
I'm Jeremiah Borbath. I'm the citywide maintenance board. I've been with them for three years.
So, mostly a...
Young AJ, he's a star. He's going to shine.
All right. Could do so when you're all tired and, you know... Yeah, there you go. Well, good deal. Well, thank you so much, Regina, for sending the emails and going back and forth. And you all deserve all the credit that's due. And it sounds like we got, like you said, a newer team and some good energy. And, you know, half of the... Half the battle is having a good team that works together and...
We'll be no good, fellers, once that deep snow gets here and we get behind on it.
Yeah, that's okay.
It'll be a different story, always.
This guy's saying the S-word already in here. That's too early, so... All right, well, let's get a photo with all of you and let you guys get back to your families.
Up front, guys. All the way up front.
You want to come... Actually, you know what? Just stay there and just shift over. It's kind of such a big room.
Very good. All right. Congratulations.
All right, let's squeeze in because we only have so much frame. Paperman.
Tell us, too.
Yeah. Make sure we're... Okay. All right, you good?
All right, ready? One, two, three.
All right, let's give them a handoff. Good job. Good job. Regina? Appreciate it. Thank you so much, yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thanks for your service.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming in tonight. Appreciate it. Appreciate it, Randy. Thank you. Okay. All right, I know that always takes a little bit of time, but it's always well worth it. And we're going to move on to the consent agenda for the approval of minutes of the regular meeting from October 21st. Consideration of pre-approved claims and consideration of claims. If there's no discussion, I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Calgill to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilman Brunner. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Abstain.
Marshall. Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Devine.
Do we have to abstain if we weren't here at the last meeting, Marty?
You don't have to.
Okay, aye.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. And moving on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Councilwoman Devine?
The Board of Works met this week and the main business they did was they approved the purchase of some equipment for the building department. I believe it was a trailer and then another... I don't know if it was a full tractor or a piece of an attachment to the one that they have to help assist with the demolitions and breaking up concrete and being able to actually take the bigger excavator to the different sites. They found the trailer they had wasn't heavy enough to be able to handle it and was causing them problems. So, they used the ARPA money they already had budgeted for that. The Utility Services Board is meeting this week. At the last meeting I was at, they did some updates on the different SRF fund projects they had going on. They started the pre-bid for the long-term control plan tank that's going in on the property that I think... Did we... We closed, vacated an alley or part of a street for where that project is going? They are looking at some sewage bombs, which I think... I think... Did they have to bring those to us anyway or was that brought at the last meeting? My timeframe is kind of confused now with all the different meetings and things going on over the last couple of weeks. And then they reported that the H2O Fund, which is a fundraiser that was started by the utility employees to help others afford their water bills, they received donations totaling almost $6,000 year-to-date. So, they were pretty proud of the money that the employees are putting into that and bringing in and then the matching funds that they're getting to be able to continue to help the community with those bills. And then this... They have another meeting this week, so I'll report on that one after that.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Any other committee reports? Councilman Brunner?
We had a park board meeting yesterday and the reason there's about 15 attorneys here is because of that park board meeting. So, they'll be explaining to you what they're up to. So, I'm just going to let them be able to tell us the whole story in just a little bit. How's that sound?
Is that legal to have that many at one spot or...
That sounds like a lot of billable hours right now, too.
Thank you, Marty.
Any other committee reports? All right, fantastic. Then we're going to move on to unfinished business. First one up is General Ordinance 26-2025, Bonds for Parks District, Second Reading in Public Hearing.
In ordinance approving the issuance of bonds of the City of Marion Parks District and related matters, on October 6th, 2025, the Park and Recreation Board of the Park District of the City of Marion, Indiana, adopted a resolution determining preliminarily to issue special taxing district bonds in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2 million to finance the construction, acquisition, renovation, installation, and equipping of improvements at various parks in the district, including a new municipal skate park and South Side food truck. Speaking, Joe Murphy, Chris Grisell, and a representative from Bakersfield.
Good evening. Welcome, Joe. Good evening. I am not attorney, but I brought him if we need him. Yeah, good afternoon, council members. Joe Murphy here, Economic Development Director for the city. So, Ayesha really covered it with that executive summary, but if you'll recall, back to your October meeting, we approved the first reading for this bond ordinance. We're now coming back, as statute requires, for all ordinances to pass it, hopefully on second reading if we may suspend the rules. The project we're looking at financing here is the South Side Park and the Skate Park. The South Side Park would be a whole new park focused on food truck events as well as live music and other public events. And then during the day-to-day course of the normal business week, it would just be a public recreation site. And then the Skate Park would be a purpose-built skate park with an eye towards creating a regional asset that would be attracting people from all over the state of Indiana to Marion for the purpose of skating and biking. Both of these projects are part of the greater Elevate Marion package. And the reason we're coming before you with this specific Parks Bond is because we do have an existing obligation that's about to roll off the books at the end of this year. And instead of allowing that bond to roll off the books and allowing that property tax rate to drop by 2%, we're recommending that we keep that rate flat, issue new debt that would allow our debt service to remain flat. So, there's no increase in payment, no increase in taxes, but we do be... We are able to capture new revenues to perform these projects. As you can see in your documents, not to exceed $2 million. Right now, we're anticipating project proceeds of about $1.5 million, dedicating $750,000 to each of the two respective projects, and then probably another $150,000, $100,000 to $150,000 in issuance fees as well as reserve money as part of that bond issuance. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions. One other comment, like Councilman Brunner did mention, we did meet as a Parks Board yesterday. They held two public hearings on the confirmatory resolution as well as the appropriation for this bond. And after closing those public hearings, approved those two resolutions by unanimous consent. They also approved the form of the bond as well by unanimous consent. So, they've fully authorized this approval and now comes for you for final approval. So, be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you so much, Joe.
And the reason we're coming before you with this specific Parks Bond is because we do have an existing obligation that's about to roll off the books at the end of this year. And instead of allowing that bond to roll off the books and allowing that property tax rate to drop by 2%, we're recommending that we keep that rate flat, issue new debt that would allow our debt service to remain flat. So there's no increase in payment, no increase in taxes, but we do be, we are able to capture new revenues to perform these projects. As you can see in your documents, not to exceed 2 million. Right now, we're anticipating project proceeds of about 1.5 million, dedicating $750,000 to each of the two respective projects. And then probably another one to 150, 100 to 150,000 dollars in issuance fees as well as reserve money as part of that bond issuance. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, one other comment, like Councilman Brunner did mention, we did meet as a Parks Board yesterday. They held two public hearings on the confirmatory resolution as well as the appropriation for this bond. And after closing those public hearings, approved those two resolutions by unanimous consent. They also approved the form of the bond as well by unanimous consent. So they've fully authorized this approval and now comes for you for final approval. So be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you so much, Joe. Good explanation and description of what's going on here. Before we go to the public hearing, any council members have questions for Joe or Chris? Vice President Fordice.
I'd rather speak to Joe since Chris just made partner. I don't think I can afford to speak to him unless, unless he's getting billed, unless he's billing RDC instead of the City of Marion. If it's RDC, I'll let him get up and speak if he's billing them. But anyhow, congratulations, Chris. I just, Joe, I know we've gone over this a couple of times. Do you have any hard numbers for the projects? I know I asked you last time we brought this up.
Yeah, so to answer your question, not, nothing definitive yet. So we're at a process right now with the skate park where we've completed about 40% of the design process. So we have a fair estimate of what it's going to cost right now. Truth be told, that $750,000 we anticipate will cover kind of the core components of the park. There are going to be some alternates that will probably take to full design and bid out, but likely will not be able to accomplish with this initial budget. Hopefully come back in additional phases and perform that work. Primarily, that's going to be the pump track. Nick, you might care to speak on that more, but I don't know exactly what that component entails, but likely will not be included in part of the original construction on the South Side Park. A very similar situation where that $750,000, right now, we have an estimated total project budget. If we were to perform all those works right now, that's about 1.2 million. But the $750,000, we feel confident we'll be able to get the core components of that, which is all of the hard skate work, all the concrete work, as well as the turf lawn and some of the amenities that are going to come along with that. What's likely going to have to occur at an additional phase is going to be the covered awning for the actual concert venue stage. That's going to be part of that park fixture in years to come. So right now, again, with the 1.5 million across the two projects, we feel very confident we'll be able to accomplish kind of a very strong Phase 1 with likely need to perform some additional works in the future if we're going to fully realize the renderings and the concepts that have been shared through the Elevate Marion proposal and other project discussions throughout the last month or so.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Joe.
Yeah, the skate park's kind of been something I've pushed for and we'll call it, for lack of better words, my baby, so to speak. Yeah, the, we're estimating the total skate park about 1.25 million. That's including the pump track and everything. My hope is that we can do it all at one time. It would probably save us since the manpower will be here, you know, just some of that overhead expense. But about 1.25 total for the skate park, and it would make it the state's second-largest skate park only to Evansville, which is three, four hours away, larger than any skate park in the rest of the state other than Evansville. So definitely would be a regional attraction. It is a concrete skate park. I know some of the council members are very familiar. They've been at some of the meetings we've had. But that's the estimate, you know, you, but we had this estimate done earlier this year. But as we know, you know, labor and concrete can go up and down, so we don't have a hard, hard number yet. And we, we didn't want to spend the time and money to get that until we knew we had some funding for it. So this is the initial funding for that. So. All right. Any other questions before we open it to public hearing? All right. Sounds great. We'll open it to the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this bond for the South Side Food Truck Park and Skate Park, you're welcome to make your way to the microphone now. Come on up to the microphone, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Giles.
Could you turn the mic on, please? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Giles Lynn Whitaker, and I am speaking against this at this time. And the reason I'm speaking against it is this. We have a bond about to roll off. Why can't we let that bond roll off and wait? You compared the second largest to the city of Evansville. Evansville is the third-largest city in the state. We're talking millions of people. I believe it's 2.5. Let's talk about property tax. We just had property tax cut in the state of Indiana. We, this board, just did a 1% food and beverage tax for the county that has gone up. Marion itself is 27.8% in poverty. We have a shutdown in the government right now. Next year, we are going to be hit with different information because the tax revenue is not going to come in from property tax itself. So we're going to have a fire department. We're going to have a library. That is a wonderful library. We're going to have a fire department and a school department, and overall taxes will be dropping. I don't believe we are increasing in property. What we are doing is losing people. And when we lose people, the property stays, but we are adding debt to it. I'm a fiscal conservative, and I think we all need to be at this time and stage in our community. I served on this board. I understand finance. And what scares me is going into debt when we know there will be loss in revenue. And if there's loss in revenue, where are the circuit workers and where are the people? And how will we be able to afford all of that? I really don't think at this time, your project, you said your baby, should be funded based on what is going on in this state and in the economy. I believe the baby can wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come to the microphone? If you could, when you get to the microphone, if you could state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
I'm Marcus Garcia. I am 51 years old. I've lived here since 1988 with the GM TransFirst. I grew up skateboarding around here. And you know what, ma'am? You're right. We don't know what's going to happen. But I tell you what, why should we live in fear? Why should we be afraid of what's going to happen? Taxes have gone up. You know what? Indiana's still, what, 7% sales tax, if I'm not mistaken? Still one of the lowest in the country. Again, why should we live in fear? This is a good project to help the younger generation stay off the streets. And, you know, there's a whole group of us over here. Unfortunately, the numbers aren't here like they were the first time. But there is a need for this skate park. We've got plenty of basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball. You know, they just tore down a skate park in Kokomo, and it had a history that was known worldwide. Now, some of you guys, obviously, we know, are into skateboarding. That's natural. But it is an up-and-coming sport, and there are actually studies that show upper 30s to middle age does have a mental health benefit to it. It's athletic. It gets, it helps social structure. You learn to, you're off your phones. You're outside. You're enjoying the weather, meeting new people. Part of, part of skateboarding is traveling. I have met friends all over the U.S. from skateboarding. And, you know, you can't take back those memories and, you know, we all have, we're all, I'm a grandpa now. So my kids unfortunately did not grow up skateboarding, but, you know, maybe my grandkids might. These gentlemen over here may have kids one day. Their kids might skateboard. You know, it's, 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 I've grown up through the bad low time of it when people made fun of us to where now it's accepted and it's on the Olympics, it's on ESPN. And, you know, you're right, ma'am. Times are tough. But this is how we escape that. I'm going on 10 months sober. Every Saturday, I go skate. Skateboarding is part of my therapy. I use it. I look forward to going skateboarding every Saturday or Sunday. Once a week, I'm going skateboarding. And again, it goes back to mental health. I mean, if I didn't have skateboarding and my homies over here helping me.
10 seconds.
It might not be this way. Peace. Thank you. And I appreciate every one of you guys. Whether or not it goes or not, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
But please, we need the money.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, microphone's still open. If you could state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Andrew Lowe. I'm a 35-year-old resident of Marion, Indiana. I was born and raised here. I was actually raised a block away from the original skate park on 14th and Hill. And I'm all for the advocating of skateboarding and teaching people the future, and I've done it to my best ability. So with the skate park being improved and implemented into the community, it's going to implement that many more of the younger citizens that are going to end up growing into your positions eventually one day. A structure in life that they will never learn outside of skateboarding or extracurricular activity. We have a problem with the youth nowadays sits inside and plays video games and plays on their cellphones 24/7. They don't learn any social constructs. They don't learn how to get out into the community and develop with their peers. For me, skateboarding, I've been 20 years deep. I don't turn back. I'm 35 years old, and I have absolutely no plans on quitting or stopping teaching people how to skate and try to fill my shoes in the, in the process. So I know it's probably a big project to chunk off all at once, and I understand where you're coming from. Maybe doing it in, in situations instead of all at once. But at the same time, if it's, if it's practical to do all at once, it would be definitely a benefit to the society around us. It will bring and attract a large crew and a crowd from many states over. And I can attest to that because I travel many states over quite, quite often a month to skate all these other new skate parks. And I see the amount of people that they are bringing. It's almost, the skate parks are huge now. And there's so many people there that it's almost hard to still skate because it's attracting that many more people. So I'm, I'm not sure what, what's in the budget or what's in the future. And at the same situation, I'm not against it. So hopefully, we can go forward with it and move forward into the future of what life is going to be like outside of, you know, the practical basketball and baseball. Because this is a sport. It's not only just an art form. It's a way of life, and it, it will teach you so many fundamental practices in life. So hopefully, we can go somewhere.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right. Welcome to the microphone. Name, address, and you have three minutes.
Address? Seven Valley Court. Is that what you said?
Name, address, and you have three minutes.
Guy Allwine, Seven Valley Court. I'm a 31, I'm 31 years old. I've lived in this town my entire life. I'm here to get, to speak against this proposed bond. The reason I'm here today is to convince this council and everyone else here that this proposed skate park is a frivolous expense that doesn't need to be made at this time. Above all, it should not be paid for by the hard-working taxpayers of Marion. I frequented the old skate park that was located on South Valley Avenue for many years before it was moved to near the splash pad. I'll start with the City of Marion already had a skate park, which I just spoke on. It was completely fenced in, had a concrete pad spanned, which spanned the entire area of the actual skate park. Had plenty of attractions, half-pipe, quarter-pipe, boxes, rails. It had everything a skater could ask for besides a bowl, a concrete bowl. It did not have that. So at some point, the city decided to move this skate park from 14th Street and South Valley Avenue to 24th and Adams. The reasons the city gave the people for moving the skate park was vandalism, crime, as well as it being difficult and costly to maintain. If the previous skate park was difficult to maintain and costly to maintain with a smaller footprint, where will the money for this skate park's maintenance come from throughout the next 10 to 15 years after it's completed? And all the money has been spent. How often is our current skate park used daily or weekly? Can we get a study to see how many people actually go to our skate park now? Or how, how many wanted a skate park versus financing infrastructure upgrades or bringing in more jobs? Google searches for skate parks from 2004 to 2021 have dropped over 85%, which very well indicates fewer people are skateboarding. Anticipation, participation numbers are suffering. Fewer skaters are going to the skate park than in past times. In the seven years between 2006 and 2014, the number of participants aged between 6 and 17 years old decreased from 8.75 million to less than 4 million. And that was a while ago, when skating was, in my opinion, bigger, more popular. Youth participation dropped 50% in the last seven years of skateboarding. That's a statistic found on GoSkate.com. After the skate park was moved to the Adams Street location, it became almost unusable. This was due to it being on a large hill directly next to and above Adams Street. This created a problem because it wasn't fenced in with skateboards being launched out into traffic because, like I said, the city didn't choose to fence in that newly-made area. They just kind of moved what was already there and just kind of threw it up there. The City of Marion needs to focus on bringing in more high-paying jobs and repairing the current infrastructure we have, and let's focus on seasonal attractions. Why not focus on making Matter Park the greatest park in the state?
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, welcome. If you could just state your name, address, you have three minutes.
Hello, council. My name is Sammy Bracy. I'm from Portland, Indiana. I'm a senior at Indiana Wesleyan University, and I'm here to support the skate park. I think there's this divide and barrier between Iowa as a college and the City of Marion. Not saying if that's a Marion problem or an Iowa problem. But for me personally, going to the skate park here in Marion the last four years has been a really good way to kind of bridge a connection between me and the city. And I feel that a lot of, a lot of other Iowa students feel the same way. I think skateboarding is a form of self-expression, and I think that it's important that the youth are able to do that in a productive, safe manner. And I think this new skateboard park can help accomplish that. The current park is, I think, reasons for people maybe not being out there. There's a big sand pit in the middle. The gravel is cracked. I think the need for the skate park is, a new one is, is obviously there. Muncie just built a new skate park. They're doing fine maintaining it with the community. There's always a lot of people there. I don't see why it would be any different here in Marion. Additionally, I'm, I'm from Portland, so I, I go to college here. But when I'm in Portland and I'm not in college, I have to drive 40 minutes, an hour to Muncie or Hartford City for the nearest skate park. The Portland skate park got tore down years ago. So I think the notion that people within the state, even outside of the state, would drive far just to get to a skate park, especially the second-biggest skate park, is very feasible and that there would be some economic development and incentives there in that regard. So yeah, just, just coming out in support of that and saying that I think it would be, it would be really good for the community, for, for getting people involved and from the perspective of an Iowa student, maybe getting more of a, a bridge between the City of Marion and then some of the younger college students, of which there are a lot that skate, and they skate on campus. They just don't feel safe or as comfortable in the current skate park that we have than we would in this new one. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you so much. Good evening. If you state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Ethan Rausch, 515 East Val Lane. I'm all for the skate park. Skateboarding is so important to me. I met, like, I call my second family. I met so many brothers in skateboarding. They taught me how to skateboard. They, they keep on showing me new tricks. I am also 10 months sober, and I struggle really hard with, like, drinking and stuff, not trying to drink. And skateboarding is there for me. I reach out to, to my homies and I say, hey, let's skate. And when I go, when I get on that board, like, I free my mind. Everything's all better. It, it heals me. It fixes me. And then it makes my sobriety stronger. So I, it just, it helps me out with that. I do not agree with him and the yellow shirt. We use that skate park. It's raggedy. It's dangerous, but we still use it because that's all what we have in our little small town. And I used to skate every single day there when I was younger from when it, from daytime till night, like 12 hours a day. And then obviously, I grew up, had kids and stuff like that. But I tried to skate at that park, like, every weekend. So that park does get used almost every day by us. And we have to drive, like, hours away for better parks. And if we get this park built, I believe the other towns and cities will come here and skate with us. I'm all for this park. I think it's gonna help the kids, stay off the drugs. Drugs is really big in this town. I think it will help in that type of way. Get the kids off streets, get physical, learn new hobbies that they didn't think that they would learn or want to try. It's really good socializing. You meet a new person every day when you skateboard. It's kind of like a big family. It's kind of like a big family. What else can I say? I have, I have a pretty big family. I have four kids and I would love to take my kids out to the new skate park and I have a five-year-old daughter.
Ten seconds.
She always comes to skate park with me and I would love to teach her how to skateboard and have her at that new park. So I'm all for the park, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Would anyone else like to speak? Welcome. State your name, address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Mark Callender, I live on two zero zero four South Valley Avenue. I too have a big family, I have twelve kids, if you count grandkids. I also pay a lot in property taxes, probably one of the higher people who pay hot property taxes in the community. I'm against the proposal, mainly because I currently spend a good deal of time cleaning up the current skate park. If you see somebody lugging around a garbage can near that skate park and dressed like a hobo, it's probably me. So I spend a lot of time cleaning it up, I pay a lot in property taxes, I have a lot of kids, none of them use the skate park, most of that money I spend on their education, frankly. But that would be why I'm against it. Furthermore, I would add, I would probably echo Ms. Whitaker's, Johnson's point, the town loses, I forget the numbers, I haven't checked in a while, but the town loses about twenty-five to fifty households per year. I think the last time I looked at the numbers, a few months ago, which means your tax revenue's going down. Your property has held firm, sorry, I ran to get here, so I'm windy, I don't run very often, I'm getting old. But that means your property taxes are coming down as well. I do own a few properties in town and I watch the market pretty closely, I work with a few developers for that. And I think it would be better to just hold fast and not move at this time and let that bond roll off. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Welcome, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, Austin Otz. I live just down the road at Ridley Tower and have been a resident here in Marion for my whole life. And I have come here today to support the project for the skate park for a few different reasons. I agree with what's been said about the economic benefit of the state park, of the skate park, bringing in people from surrounding areas with it being one of the biggest and best in the state, as well as the quality of life benefit that it'll bring to our residents and kids, you know, keeping them off the streets and off their phones and, you know, outside. But I do want to just point out, one, what I think is a underappreciated benefit of this, particularly because there was a point made about wanting the city to focus more on bringing more jobs. I currently serve as a board member on the Grant County Economic Growth Council and I'm not here to represent them, this is just my own personal opinion, but I have a lot of conversations with other board members and with the president of the council on how to bring more businesses, how to encourage more businesses to come to Marion. And one of the most common questions that site selectors ask, this is coming from our president, and actually he says the first question that many of them ask is, what kind of amenities does Marion have for our employees? So, quality of life is something that employers are thinking a lot about and it's one of the number-one considerations for them when they're thinking about moving their business to Marion. And so, I just wanted to make that point, I think it's important to improve the quality of life here and to build on the momentum that we have with the Elevate initiative. And so I think with that momentum, now is the time to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Microphone's still open. Good evening, welcome. Name, address, and three minutes.
Yes, my name is Hayden Sloop, six twenty-two Bond Avenue. I'm here, I am for the skate park being built. So currently, myself, I am investing into a skateboard shop downtown Marion, will be located in the Boston Hill Center. And I'm really hoping that we can come together as a skateboard shop and a skateboard park for Marion, which will attract plenty. So, just like, it is scary, it is something, you know, I'm a lot smaller than a big group and I'm doing a whole store by myself, so, you know, I am here for it. Hopefully the store could turn into multiple jobs over the coming years. And I just do want to say I support.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate that. Public hearing's still going, if you'd like to speak, now is your opportunity. Good evening, name, address, and three minutes.
Hello, my name's Jeremy Spencer, I live at nine seventy-eight South, three seventy-two East. And as of tomorrow, I'll be a resident of Marion for fifty-three years. In that time, when I grew up, we spent most of our days out on those streets and you came home when the streetlights came on. Today I see kids locked up on their phones, they're in their house, there's no social interaction. And I think this is something that saddens my heart. This is something that these kids need to get out and enjoy their community, right? Our common unity, right? Something that we used to do as kids was, the generation before me cruised the square and then they were kicked off the square. And then we went to the mall, that was my generation, and then we were run off the mall. So if we're not going to invest in something for our children to do, what are we investing in? I think it takes this community to invest in itself and the things that these children enjoy. I tried skateboarding, likely to kill myself trying it, so I didn't stay doing it, but we didn't have something like that at that time. I see my son that has a passion, he has a passion for skateboarding. And I see guys like Marcus and Andy, that when I was not there for him and I was lost in my addiction, and I am a person in long-term recovery that's approaching seven years and ten days. I'm thankful for these gentlemen that were there, that taught him how to skate, that invested in him. And I think it would be an injustice to the community if we don't support our children and invest in them.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak? Microphone is still open.
Are we allowed to go twice?
No, sorry. Three minutes per person. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone move, so it's your last opportunity. All right, state your name, address, three minutes.
My name's Kane Spencer, I live in Gas City, one oh seven East South C Street. And one thing I just want to shed light on, I'm sure you guys heard earlier within the year, a buddy of mine, Leo Matamoros, was sadly taken from us. And that put me in a deep part of my life, one of, probably one of the worst moments of my life I've been through. Not for just me, but my whole family, my friends. It separated me from skateboarding and these people back over here, or who got me into it again. I'm shaking because my anxiety's going through the roof right now. But, um, I want to shed light on the fact that the driver of the murderer who killed my friend, he skated and he didn't have a community that had a park that we could potentially have. And I really believe that the skate park can do a lot for our community and what matters is the kids, because they are the future of this community. So, I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that. Last call. Not seeing anyone else move forward, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Any council members? Councilman Calgo.
Yeah, I need to speak on this. I'm grateful for everybody spoke, but whether it was for or against, either way. But, you know, the ones that are against, I hear, you know, well, we're losing people and we're doing this. That's the problem with Marion. We're losing people because we're not doing anything. Yes, sir, I disagree with you. I am for this, I am for the other projects, but Joe and Chris and Andy, everybody, there's a lot of work, a lot of research that goes into this. We don't do any of this just because it sounds good. And if Marion doesn't start doing some of the things that all these other cities are doing, that are growing people and that are getting bigger, we're going to stay right where we're at and it's never going to get any bigger. I support this project a hundred percent and I'm supporting the projects that are coming
Any other council members?
Yes, sir. Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I kind of liken this to, maybe going to church. If you go to church and you have kids, what church are you going to go to? Are you going to go to a church that doesn't have a kids program? What are they going to do? When you travel and you look for a hotel to stay at and you have kids, what are you going to look for? You're going to look for one for that has a swimming pool? Maybe things for the kids to do? Same way with our neighborhoods. You move into a city that doesn't have any parks, what are your kids going to do? Here again, and it's been mentioned tonight, yeah, they're going to sit at home, they're going to watch TV, they're going to get on their cellphones, they're not going to interact with anybody. I am for this a hundred percent. This provides just another caveat for businesses to look at Marion, Indiana and say, hey, Marion's got something going on, you know? And having the second-largest skate park in the state, that's going to draw a lot of people from all over the state and multiple states. Evansville, that's a long ways to travel. Evansville is about a little over a hundred and fifteen thousand people, that's all Evansville So, we have to provide things to do, we have to provide amenities within our city to attract businesses. It's been proven time and time again, the cities that are successful in Indiana and multiple states around us have the amenities that draw those businesses because that's what their employees want. And for too long, wow, for the last forty years, we've done nothing. We have done nothing to attract businesses. Yes, everybody wants us, where's the factories at? We have to employ people. Hey, look, guys, you're not going to, you're not going to employ anybody unless you provide amenities. So let's move forward with this project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Other council members, questions, comments, opinions? Councilman Devine.
And remind me, Joe, this is, even though it's a bond rolling off and this is a new bond, this is being paid for by that sales tax we approved, correct? It's not coming from property tax or is this coming from property tax?
So, the Parks Board has a Parks District, which is a special taxing district, so they have their own established tax rate that's separate from the general fund rate, which funds the primary, it's the primary funder of your budget. That tax rate is what funds this new debt. So it's currently sitting at a level that if this bond were to roll off, would decrease slightly by about two cents per dollar of assessed value. What we're proposing is that we issue new debt to keep that rate flat, so it wouldn't be a new tax or an increase in tax, it would remain at its current level and allow us to capture new revenues to fund these projects. And then what you might be referencing is that as part of the food and beverage tax, what we've done is commit to allocating probably about four to five hundred thousand dollars a year to the maintenance of all of our parks facilities moving forward out of that budget. So, in terms of the long-term upkeep and maintenance of both the skate park as well as the South Side Park, in addition to all our other parks, will be funded out of food and beverage tax.
So if we allowed the property tax to roll off, for lack of better, then we would have no Parks Board tax at all coming in on property taxes? Or would it just be a percentage of it? Do you know that?
I'm going to have Andy Mauser come up and answer that specifically, he'll be able to go in a little bit better detail than I could.
Okay.
Andy Mauser with Baker Tilly, we serve as financial advisor to the city and the redevelopment commission. So, if that old debt did fall away, that three cents on the tax rate would not be renewed and would go away. I would note that that is, you know, three cents per a hundred dollars of assessed value and that is part of the larger city tax rate. So if I'm a taxpayer within the city of Marion, I pay county property taxes, city property taxes, school property taxes. And altogether, depending on where you are in the city of Marion, that tax rate's around four dollars and sixty cents to four dollars and eighty cents. So again, we're talking three cents on that four dollar and sixty cent or four dollar and eighty cent tax rate. Many of your taxpayers as well are at the property tax caps, so even if there was a reduction in that rate, many of your taxpayers are already paying up to that maximum one percent that they can pay under Indiana, the state constitution with the circuit breaker tax cap. So, for some taxpayers, yes, it is possible that a three cent reduction could be a slight decrease in property tax bills, but for many of your taxpayers, they're already at that cap and they would remain at that cap even with the reduction in tax rate.
Could you, could you repeat that one more time? Are you saying that for most of our population, their property taxes will not go up with this?
Correct, yeah, I think it's safe to say nobody's property taxes will go up due to this. This is a renewal of that existing tax rate. So you're, you had a two thousand five bond, was refunded in twenty fourteen, that bond for the last twenty years has had that rate in place and that rate's actually come down several cents across that twenty-year period. It's a renewal of that existing rate, so it's not an increase. And again, many of your taxpayers are at the property tax caps, so again, we would not anticipate any increase due to this specific project.
Great, thank you. Any other council members, questions for Andy while he's up there? Okay, thank you so much. Any other council members? I'll add. Add a few things. Appreciate other council members speaking, making some good points. First off, I've been waiting for you to speak, I want to welcome Councilman Kane back and it's good to see you back and doing very well. So, I was going to say something earlier, but I'm going to wait until he talks and then address, so I'm just really glad to have him back, so, welcome. First off, on this skate park, we have tried for eight grants, I will say, we have been working on this skate park endeavor for, well, I guess since we took office almost two years ago. This was a seed planted in me well over two years ago. Two of my kids are avid BMX skateboarders and I've been taking them to that old park for years when they were younger. So I've witnessed it firsthand and seen the moving of the skate park, the decline of the skate park. To nobody's fault, it's just the way those were built, they don't last. And basically them nearly begging me to go, we need a good skate park. Specifically, they really like hunger skate parks. And, okay, tell me all about it, I've never done it, I don't know anything about it and I probably would never will for my own safety. But I started doing more research and started figuring out where all these hunger skate parks are and really what they do in the community. There is, to get to this point right now is a big, big deal. There has been a lot and a lot of work and a lot of communication done leading up to today for the last two years, lots of communication with hunger. I have talked to other cities, other city council presidents, other parks directors in other cities that have these skate parks and really done a lot of homework. Every single city that has put one of these in said it was one of the best decisions they've ever made. Ever. Like emphatically, I don't even plant it in like, so tell me, what's it done for the city? Wow, we would do it again a hundred percent, one of the best decisions we've ever made. And that's what really sold me on to continue pushing for this. And I appreciate the mayor seeing that vision and coming on board, Joe, who's done a lot of work as well, a whole team behind all of this. team behind all of this. But I wanted the community to know that we're not just, we didn't just cut the line and go, ah, let's just try and get this off of a park bond. We've tried eight different grants. Our grant writer, Dr. Jeff Reyes, has done a phenomenal job so far. We haven't gotten any yet. I think we have a few remaining, but it's not for a lack of effort. We're really trying to get grant money. I've also tried to solicit businesses for naming rights. So if you're listening or you know somebody, we're looking for a business to, if they want to call this the Acme Skate Park, then show us the money and we would take your sponsorship. So we really would love some private investment. But just to kind of go back real quick on some of the things were said and recap, appreciate Councilman Cogill saying this, but, and I've said this in other meetings and very passionately, but the mentality of do nothing has been our problem. And we have been bleeding residents because why? They go to communities where they see, there's things for my kids to do. There's a reason Hamilton County gets talked about all the time. Fort Wayne is back on the rise again. Their river district is completely changed in the last 10 years because they're investing in their youth, they're investing in their community. And yes, sometimes it requires a bond. We cannot let the fear cripple us in making bold decisions. November 5th of 2024, or of 2023, the voters of this city voted on a mandate for change. We're all sitting here right now. Many of us knew, a new mayor, and they said, we want change. We're tired of the same old, same old. And this is what we're doing. We're delivering on that mandate of, we're going to make change in this city. We're going to move this city forward, and we're going to be proud to say we're from Marion again. Because when I moved here, it wasn't that way. I've said this before, I'll say it again. When I moved here, I felt depressed. I mean, people are like, why'd you come here? Nothing to do. Which is another reason it motivated me to sit here right now, is to be part of that change. And to speak on the old park, or the current park, hopefully we can call it the old park, it's wooden, it falls apart, it doesn't withhold the wear and tear of BMX and skateboarding. That's why we're looking at concrete. The maintenance, it's actually, these skate parks are very low maintenance. You just have to seal the concrete every couple of years, and that's it. I mean, that's it. You put a sealer on it, and it's, I think Hunger told us, it's sometimes, depending on the size of the skate park, about $5,000 to seal it every couple of years. Drop on the bucket. That maintenance can be paid with food and beverage tax. I'm sure we could probably get a donation for $5,000 to do that as well. I appreciate the gentleman coming up from Indiana Westland. I had not even thought of that. I can't believe it. But what a bridge between the college community and Marion to bring them here, and also to help Indiana Westland attract students. We have a gentleman wants to invest in his skate shop. I've seen other communities that have skate and BMX shops that are thriving, and those skate and bike shops actually are kind of like that rally point for the community. And these skate shops and bike shops actually have competitions, they do bike giveaways. It is, it's more than just, I don't want to, there's a community, but we want this community to grow, right? We want little kids to come out and ride the little bikes around the pump track and stay off of their iPads, right? How many of us go to a restaurant, no offense, and kids can't get, eating pizza and can't get his eye off the iPad, right? That's the world we're living in. We're in the iPad cellphone culture, and this is a way to get away from that. The definition of elevate Marion, as the mayor has said, is to elevate Marion, and that's what we're here to do. And I knew the answer to Andy's question, I just wanted you to say it. This is not increasing anyone's taxes. I would say my strongest point for this, I can't remember who it was, a gentleman talked about Mater Park. Councilman Klein's not here to be proud of me, I said it properly. Mater Park, not matter park, it's Mater Park. But if you've ever been to Mater Park, you've gone to Friendship Corner, which is that giant playground, you would not have that playground if it wasn't for this bond. This bond originally funded that playground. If you've ever been to the Splash House, the water park, you would not have that Splash House if it wasn't for this bond. Those were investments in our community that we are proud of. Somebody said, let's invest in Mater Park. Well, we did. And you know how we did? This same bond. And I hope in 10 or 20 years, somebody else is sitting up here and going, yeah, remember that skate park that everyone still really loves? That's how we paid for it, was this bond, and continue that forward. And so that's just how things have to get done, right? We have to invest in our community. So I think we've driven this point long enough. I did want to say, I recognize and congratulate those of you that talked about soberness, and I do really appreciate you sharing that. I know it's not an easy thing to share that, and it can feel vulnerable, but commend you. I'm proud of you for saying that and maybe motivating others that were in your shoes to find some community as well. So we really appreciate that. That's all I have to say. Any other council members?
All right, if nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules on General Ordinance 26, 2025.
Second. Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Cogill, second by Councilman Kane. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Cogill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, the rules have been suspended. I'd entertain another motion.
Mr. President, I'd now like to make a motion that we pass General Ordinance 26, 2025.
Second. Motion to pass General Ordinance 26, 2025 by Councilman Cogill, second by Councilman Kane. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Cogill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. General Ordinance 26, 2025 has passed. Thank you, everyone, whether you're for or against it. We appreciate you being here tonight. Moving on to Additional Appropriation 15-2025, Additional Appropriation for Transportation, Second Reading and Public Hearing.
An additional appropriation for the City of Marion Transportation Department. We need to address an issue with the transportation budget for Account 2418. The 2022 audit report required that the transportation has its own dedicated fund. However, by late 2023, the 2024 budget had already been completed and submitted to the council. As a result, no city funds were appropriated for the matching portion in either 23 or 24. To rectify this oversight, we're requesting an additional appropriation to correct these past years. The total city portion was $638,658. Speaking the Controller's Office.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Good evening to the council and everybody here who's, mine's not that exciting. So we kind of talked about it two weeks ago, and I brought this to the council, that we wanted to go ahead and rectify this oversight, $638,658. Is any questions?
Thank you, Dana. Any council members with questions? If not, we would go ahead and open the public hearing for this. If you'd like to speak, come up to the microphone. Not seeing anyone move to the microphone? All right, we'll go and close the public hearing. Any other council members with questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules on Additional Appropriation 15, 2025.
Second. Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Cogill, second by Councilman Kane. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Cogill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, rules have been suspended. I'd entertain another motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we pass Additional Appropriation 15, 2025.
Second. Motion to pass Additional Appropriation 15-2025 by Councilman Cogill, second by Councilman Kane. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Cogill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, Additional Appropriation 15-2025 has passed. Moving on to Additional Appropriation 16-2025, Additional Appropriation for Parks and Rec, Second Reading and Public Hearing.
An additional appropriation for salaries for the park security officers. This request is for an additional appropriation in the amount of $27,972 to fund three security positions for our city parks. The goal is to enhance the safety and security of both the parks and their visitors. These security staff members will provide coverage for our parks at least 42 hours a week, seven days a week. The salary ordinances for these positions have already been approved. Speaking, Rose Cadena in the Controller's Office.
Good evening, welcome back.
Guess it's me, no Rose. Yes, I brought this two weeks ago, also that we just need to get that additional appropriation to pay the salary for the security for the parks.
Great, thank you. Council members with questions?
Just to clarify, President McKinley, that's for the remainder of this year? It's already been budgeted for next year? Thank you.
That is correct.
Thank you, appreciate that. If no other questions, we'll go and go to the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, make your way to the microphone. All right, don't see anyone moving to the microphone. Close the public hearing. Council members, any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules on Additional Appropriation 16, 2025.
Second. A motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Cogill, second by Councilman Brunner. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Cogill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, rules have been suspended. I'd entertain another motion.
Mr. President, I'd now like to make a motion that we pass Additional Appropriation 16, 2025.
Second. Motion to pass Additional Appropriation 16, 2025 by Councilman Cogill, second by Councilman Brunner. Any discussion from council? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Cogill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, Additional Appropriation 16, 2025 has passed. Moving into New Business, Resolution 15-2025, excuse me, lease agreement among the Marion Redevelopment Commission and the Marion Redevelopment Authority.
A resolution of the common council approving a lease between Marion Redevelopment Authority and the Marion Redevelopment Commission and addressing matters related thereto. The Marion Redevelopment Authority is considering the issuance of one or more series of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $20 million to finance all or any portion of Ballard Fields project, the bridge project, the airport utilities project, and the fire truck project. The lease provides, for the lease by the Redevelopment Authority to the Redevelopment Commission of certain real estate consisting of all or a portion of Washington Street in the city from First Street to 32nd Street. The Redevelopment Commission has conducted a public hearing and approved the form of lease presented for the purposes of paying the principal and interest on the bond's issues to finance the projects. The Redevelopment Authority has authorized the issuance of bonds and approved the form of lease. Speaking, Mayor Morrell, Barnes &amp; Thornburg, and Baker Tilly.
All right, thank you so much. Joe Murphy. I am not Mayor Morrell, I'm Joe Murphy.
There we go. Good to be back for you again. Actually, why I'm getting feedback there.
Can you just try Marty's? See if that works better. You don't have to get it too close. How about the one up there?
How's that? Better? Okay. Yeah, the executive summary does a great job of summarizing what this project is all about. Ultimately, I just want to provide you guys with some additional information and overview of the project as it stands. So number one, the nuts and bolts, we're looking to issue $20 million in new money to fund four major projects. This is in addition to the two projects we just finished speaking about, which make up the whole of Mayor Morrell's elevate Marion vision. We've beat this horse to death a little bit this evening, but obviously this administration is on a path to try to create a new Marion, a better Marion, that's focused on quality of life, quality of place, and creating a beautiful place for our residents to live in and play in. And now it's getting loud, sorry. Is that better? Okay, sorry, I was getting feedback there. I do want to touch just very briefly on why this is a lease financing structure and not a traditional bond, like you may expect with this kind of project. So as you may or may not know, cities, any other taxing district across the state of Indiana is bound by a constitutional debt limit. So you have an assessed value as a community, one-third of your assessed value times 2%, that's all you're allowed to issue in terms of general obligation debt. That is state law, passed 100-some years ago. It's a little bit archaic, a little bit challenging to meet when you're talking about doing large projects. You're in a position where you're trying to push a community forward and grow at a quick pace like we are, like a lot of communities across the state of Indiana are. So when bonding is not an option because your debt limit is so low that the project succeed that debt limit, you need to go to an alternative. The lease financing is that alternative. What we're looking at is the creation, well, we've already created a redevelopment authority, and now we're going to be entering into a lease agreement between our redevelopment commission and our redevelopment authority for, as we mentioned, their Washington Street between First and 32nd Street. That's important because that's an asset that the bank can recognize as collateral against the bonds that are going to be issued by the redevelopment authority in the amount of $20 million. We know it's $20 million because we had HWC, our professional engineering group, come out and look at that road, understand what it would cost to mill it all the way down and reconstruct it to today's standards, and they estimated that'd be about $20 million. So that's why we're talking about that specific asset. The redevelopment authority, once this is complete, will then issue bonds in up to $20 million in multiple series. The proceeds of those bonds will flow directly back to the city to perform the four projects, Ballard Fields, the bridge project, the airport project, and the fire apparatus project. And then the way that the city will cover that debt is through lease payments. So the redevelopment commission will issue lease payments to the redevelopment authority that will be identical in value to the debt service on the bonds that were issued by the redevelopment authority. So it's a way to circumnavigate that debt obligation that would exceed the constitutional debt limit for the city while also allowing the city to do projects at a high level. Last thing I'll mention is the repayment of those debts is going to be a combination of TIF monies and food and beverage monies, and we feel that there is more than adequate revenues being developed right now and then into the future to support this bond. So we feel like this is a very financially responsible project, and we also think that it is imperative, as Councilman Cogill and many others mentioned, that we continue to push Marion forward with these projects and grow and create a community that is exciting, vibrant, and has things to do. So I'd be happy to take any questions you guys have. We also have Chris Griesel with Barnes &amp; Thornburg here to discuss the kind of the format of the lease, if there's any questions about that, as well as Andy Mauser from Baker Tilly to discuss the financials of it all. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Joe. Great job explaining it. Any council members? Questions? All right. No other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we pass Resolution 15, 2025 onto a second reading, public hearing.
Yeah, it's actually, it's just a resolution. All we need is just, this is a, just actually, yeah.
I was just, you wasn't here, I was checking. Very good, you got it, okay.
Well, just for the public, I want them to know.
Make a motion that we pass Resolution 15, 2025.
Second. I got a motion to pass Resolution 15, 2025 by Councilman Cogill, second by Councilman Kane. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Cogill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, Resolution 15-2025 has passed. It will not go to a public reading. Thank you, appreciate it, Joe. Appreciate all your hard work, too. If you don't know, this guy works so hard for the city, and we just really appreciate all the efforts that you're doing. You're kind of like the unseen force behind the scenes is really helping drive this change for our community. So kudos to you, appreciate you.
Thank you very much. I just want to congratulate you guys all. I commend you for taking this vote tonight, as well as the previous vote on the Parks District bond. I mean, I think this is really momentous stuff you guys are doing, and kudos to you guys for moving your community forward. It's a bold vision, it's an exciting vision, and it's why I continue to come back here and work in Marion. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Talk to Chris and Andy out, please, please.
Good point. To J. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. And I know they haven't said a whole lot tonight, but Andy and Chris do do a lot behind the scenes, yeah. They're the ones that write these, the legal jargon and educate us at the RDC meeting. So, while they may not say a lot here, they have well-prepared us to get to this point. So, kudos to them as well. So, thank you. Have a safe drive. Moving on to general ordinance twenty-eight twenty twenty-five, adding no parking zones, first reading.
An ordinance establishing a no parking zone on the east side of Washington Street from Seventh Street to Tenth Street. With the construction of the walking path and parking bumpouts along the west side of Washington Street from Seventh to Ninth Street, it reduces the overall travel lane width of Washington Street. This reduction prompted an engineering recommendation to create a no parking section on the east side of Washington Street to enhance traffic movement and overall public safety from Seventh Street all the way to Tenth Street. Speaking, Mike Graft.
Good evening.
Aye.
How are you, sir? So, many of you have been a part of the interesting wide sidewalks that started from the Cardinal Greenway down Tenth Street and goes up Boot Street and then crosses on Ninth Street and then attaches at Washington Street and stops at the library. Not only is it a walking path, but it is a bike path. That is why you have the width that you, that was required. We had a grant that we accepted from DNR that had specifications that we had to meet, and one of the specifications is that it had to be a minimum of a certain feet to allow for both walking and biking. The unforeseen circumstances that prompted after the design was done, that really no one saw on paper, was there are a few what are called bumpouts that protect the area along the bike path, and those bumpouts extend into the drive lane as you go southbound. And although if any of you have traveled that area, there's very, very few parking, if any, that anybody parks. Maybe at the church, we've seen a couple people parked there, which kind of prompted the concern. We were, I was actually driving down on the west side going southbound, and there was somebody that actually parked at the church on the street. And if you know the way that the realignment of the road is done, I could not get into the lane because there was people on my left side as I was driving down. So I had to stay in that lane until they passed in order to get in the lane because of that parking. So, an unforeseen situation that reared as the design was done, but wasn't caught in the, you know, when it's on paper, everything looks good on paper, and then you kind of see what you have after the fact. So, what's brought before you this evening is along that, as you're traveling south, the left lane to place no parking, we gave you some examples of where we would put that signage to kind of give you some visual along the way. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain any of those.
Appreciate it, Mike, thank you. Any councilmembers with questions?
Did any of the adjoining property owners have any issues with that?
No, I mean, obviously, this is, as we're going, we've discussed with the church, they know that they have adequate parking. It's very seldom that anybody really parks on the street, so they were surprised that anybody parked on the street there by the church, but no one is, most everybody has adequate parking along there anyways.
Is that starting at, you're talking the First United Methodist parking lot across the street from their church?
Yeah, so, to make it consistent, rather than just going from like Seventh to Ninth, it was just easier to extend it where it stops at the intersection at Tenth.
Any other questions for Mike? Has notice been given to anyone that lives in those blocks, I mean, to let them know?
No, just verbal, we just talk to them, just let them know that this is where we're going to go. And as this, you know, the process goes, they'll have a second reading that will let them know that they can come and have conversations with you folks if they have concerns.
And Mike, does church not have a problem with this?
No, they have, like I said, they have adequate parking. They were kind of surprised that anybody actually parked on the street. They, it's very seldom that that's ever done.
Mike, would this remove any handicap parking? Is there any specialty parking there?
None, there's nothing. There's already some no parking from here to corner, which, there are several intersections that that is through there, but no, nothing specialized, even no loading zones or anything that this would hinder.
Right, thank you, appreciate that.
And Will, are we anticipating that that's going to affect the new business that's going in the old, is that Firestone Building? The, that's by the church? Because they're, from what I understand, they're putting in some additional recreation things and stuff like that. So where's their parking going to be?
Well, as always noted, when development happens, on-street parking is not part of what is considered when you're asking for, you know, zoning or anything like that. So, having it removed is not, should not affect what they already have to have resolved within their area. Either they would have to extend their parking lot, lease parking space, but having off or on-street parking is not, it's not something that we negotiate with them.
You know, I was kind of taking a Google Street View while we're talking, and I don't even, I don't, maybe I'm not seeing, I don't see any residences? They're all businesses, right? Yeah. Because I know there was like the body shop and there was a roofing company, but I'm like, I don't see any residential. So, all these are businesses with parking lots. And then, looking across the street, mostly businesses as well, and if there's a house, it has a driveway, so.
Or, and there is, where you see the bumpouts, there is parking that if they needed to park on that side, it's negligible to the traffic flow.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much, Mike. No other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, I'm going to go ahead and pass this one on to second reading, if that's all right with you, for general ordinance twenty-eight twenty twenty-five.
Second.
That's true, yeah.
Who had the second on that? Okay, excuse me. I got a motion to pass general ordinance twenty-eight twenty twenty-five to a second reading, public hearing by Councilman Calgill, second by Councilman Kane. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Four dice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, general ordinance twenty-eight twenty twenty-five, pass, go into second reading, public hearing at the next council meeting. And then, moving on to general ordinance, our final one, twenty-nine twenty twenty-five, rezoning ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the common council of the city of Marion amending Marion City Code, Chapter one fifty-three zoning ordinance. At the regular meeting of the Marion, City of Marion Advisory Plan Commission on October twenty-eighth twenty twenty-five, the main agenda item was a public hearing for the rezoning of lots seventy-eight and seventy-nine of Gray Dodd's first edition, being a part of the Family Express Development at three zero one South Baldwin Avenue, from R-four medium-density single to multifamily and multifamily residential to GB general business, which is the same zoning as the remainder of the property in this development. The proposal aligns with the comprehensive plan's criteria and received a positive staff recommendation. The motion to approve the rezoning was made, seconded, and passed unanimously, and subsequently passed to the city council. Speaking, Mike Graft or Brian Stumps.
Good evening. I'm not going to hog the newest member of the city of Marion's planning directing position. So, without, I just kind of give a little intro. Brian's, and it's actually not at Stumps, there's an F on its stump. So, Brian will be doing the planning directing for the city of Marion, and he works for HWC. So, he can provide any information to you that you might need. If not, I'll sit back here and be able to back him up if needed.
Great, thank you so much, welcome. I would like to say you have big shoes to fill, but if you need to fix anything, just make sure Mike's outside the room first, okay? Just kidding, welcome, we're so glad to have you here.
Thank you. As Mike mentioned, I'm Brian Stumpf with HWC Engineering, have the honor of serving as your interim planning director. And the petition that is before you tonight is to rezone two lots on Fourth Street from R-four to GB. They are part of a larger 1.4 acre site that Family Express has assembled to be part of a new gas station with car wash and other fun facilities that they have. This, in reviewing this item, it is consistent with your comprehensive plan. The two residential lots that are there that are the subject of this rezone have homes on them that have been damaged by fire and are slated for demolition. So this will be part of, it's a great opportunity to incorporate that into their, into the site. The planning commission provided its required notification, everything was met, as required by law. And on the twenty-eighth of October, at the planning commission meeting, this was forwarded to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation. I'm available for any questions you may have. Also is Patrick Lipp with Family Express is here to answer any questions you may have as well.
All right, thank you. I did put on the screen, and for momentarily on the video, kind of the location for those that are watching or in the audience wondering where this is at. It is, if you're looking there, you see eighteen and South Baldwin Avenue there. That eighteen on the map here is Fourth Street. And so that would be, there are, the lots are on the north side of eighteen, or right above it. So it's going to be hugging the corner there at Baldwin and eighteen, Fourth Street, but it will not cross the alley that separates Third and Fourth Street. So, just wanted some clarification for public. Any councilmembers with questions?
I would like to have the representative from Family Express step up to the mic and kind of give us an explanation and preempt what you're proposing and what you want to do here.
Good, thank you. My name is Patrick Lipp, I'm here on behalf of Family Express. I think in front of each of you should be a tangible copy of a PowerPoint presentation. So, provides us some conceptual drawings of what the store, the car wash, and the fueling area will look like, again, based upon your approval to rezone those two parcels there. For a little background, Family Express is a fifty-year-old family-owned business, began in Valparaiso, but we're now up to eighty-two stores. The most recent one was opened in Ligonier a few weeks ago. We have one also under construction in Napanee. So we are moving our footprint further east and further, and further south. As was mentioned by Brian, the intent is to make this lot as large as possible so that we're not in front of your BZA or planning commission looking for additional variance, as we want to comply with the city's zoning code. And with just one minor variance we needed from your BZA on the placement of our container for our trash receptacles, everything that we are proposing meets with the, with your town code. And so with this, I can share on behalf of the ownership family, we're excited to be part of the Marion community, hoping to break ground in a couple of weeks, again, presumptuous, but presuming you do approve the rezoning of these two lots and looking at some point probably early summer of twenty-six to have this location open.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, Vice President Fordyce?
Could you just give us a basic estimate of your amount of investment into this company?
Sure, all in, about nine million dollars, which will be the total amount. Now, that also includes land acquisition, but, again, unbiased, but in terms of our investment, we try to do these things top-notch, first-class. Again, if you've traveled further south towards Indianapolis or further west towards the state line, you may have visited one or more of our other locations. And again, that's going to be about nine million dollars all in once the whole project is done.
Great, that's fantastic. Do you have any desire for additional expresses according to population or size, north or south? Or do you just usually have one per location or?
No, essentially, and again, a lot's done upon, based upon our looking at data and communities, but you'll see in other areas where we do put our convenience stores, we generally look for primarily logistic purposes, because we do, as a side note, we do all of our baking in-house and then distribute to our eighty-two locations. And so, it does make practical and efficiency sense to have multiple stores in one community or in communities nearby. And so many of the communities that we do serve have multiple locations. And my sense is that this location will do well, and we'll look for other locations in Marion as well. I guess, without being self-serving, if I can make one comment, I can't express how welcoming the city of Marion and your staff have been, from Mike to Brian to Lisa. One of my day jobs is that I'm the city attorney for the city of Valparaiso.
Oh.
And so, I do see this on a firsthand basis. And some of the things in which I've experienced here, I've gone back to my mayor, Mayor John Costas, and told him about the way that we've been welcomed into the community here. And so, I'll also put a little plug in for the skate park. We built one about two years ago. I'm lucky that I can walk on two legs, let alone a board and four wheels. But it is amazing the number of people who do utilize that skate park here. A lot of what I heard this evening were the same comments that we heard during our park board and also in our city council meetings when that was approved. It opened, I think, April of twenty twenty-four. It has lights, so it has both day and night. And again, it's packed. And again, I don't want an outsider, you know, commenting on what this community is doing, but take it for what it's worth, in the city of Valparaiso, our skate park is well-used.
Well, Patrick, I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate you choosing Marion and your investment into our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question, and I appreciate getting the packet. I don't remember, I don't think that was in our packet originally, yeah, so. This evening, yeah, which, you know, I had a chance to look over briefly this evening. So I will say, a concern of mine is, so, the lot that you're requesting, the lots, are to accommodate the car wash and the actual fuel bays, is that correct?
Yes, it's the two, it's the two westernmost parcels, I think it's lots seventy-eight and lots seventy-nine, which currently have, they're no longer occupied. I think one actually was a burnt-out residential structure. And so, all three of the structures that would be coming down are currently unoccupied, but yes.
I, you know, the concern I have, and I didn't know until I saw this packet, is you got the alleyway that's going to split the store, parking, and then the fuel bays and the car wash. So, technically, it's still a public alleyway, cars can be coming up and down, am I correct? And I have a concern with just foot traffic, safety, cars driving through there, and where those parking bays are for the Family Express. So if somebody is backing out of a spot there, what's that going to look like if a car's coming down the alleyway? Somebody address that concern I have?
So, yes, we reviewed the same, we have an agreement with them that that will constantly, that alley will constantly stay there. It will remain a right-of-way. There's actual sewer pipes that run under there that cannot be built over. So, yes, those were addressed. They had, the NDOT actually brought up some of the same concerns that you did about the ingress egress at that location, and we believe that we've resolved everything to NDOT's liking, to the city's liking, to allow the alley to be, remained open so trash trucks can still service the residents that are on the north and south of the alleyway. And this is not dissimilar to what you kind of see at McClure's. As you're going in and out of the Aphenah, there's a lot of movement, but we don't see anything, we don't see an issue with that particular area about backing up into that alleyway, so.
Okay, I guess, you know, with the McClure's and Aphenah, I just don't remember as many residential units there. And, you know, I live two, three blocks from this, so I live it every day. And I'm excited, I mean, this is great investment. It's just, it is a concern with the alleyway- with the alleyway there of traffic if trash trucks are coming down. I would say my number one is just cars backing out and an alley's coming down. I don't know, Mike, if in the alleyway there, if this is approved, if there can be signs that are installed to say caution, slow down, or just something for public safety.
If you look at the view of the overall site plan, the, the trash trucks are, have already been notified that they'll, they'll move north to Third Street. So if you see the arrows, instead of, instead of going through that particular area, they'll have access to go directly out north. So they won't be, that, that will be a minimization of that area. And I mean, without doing a full-blown traffic impact study, the, the use of that alley is primarily by the trash trucks. There, there's very minimal use from the residential area. Most of them go out Western Avenue.
Okay, that, that helps a lot. I'm seeing that north-south drive that's just east of the actual Family Express building. You're saying they know they're going to turn up and they, I mean, that's private property, right? And, but they have permission to traverse that.
Again, that was, that was part of the agreement, that they had to supply that.
Is there a termin, is there a expiration of that agreement or is it indefinite?
It, it goes, it'll, it will go with the property. So, yeah.
Okay, that's, that makes me feel better. And so the trash pickup in the alley will not be impacted. Okay. Gotcha. All right. Sounds good. I've been looking at those empty lots forever and going, would somebody just buy these and do something and?
Patrick did.
Yeah, they did. It's great. A couple other questions. How many approximate jobs would you say this is going to bring?
In terms of a number, we call associates at our stores, anywhere from 15 to 20 scheduled from, from the folks who work in supplying the store, the folks that cook the food, the folks that, that manage the store there. Most of our stores are usually open between 5:00 and 5:30 in the morning and close somewhere around 11 o'clock in the evening. We have about two stores, three that are open 24 hours, but we don't anticipate this being a 24-hour store.
And answer the next question is ours. And then out of these jobs, are they all full-time, some part-time?
Yeah, the, most of our, most of our associates are full-time. We start at about $16 an hour for a first-time associate. Then there's a career path to increasing your wages as well as working your way up to a store manager and other, and other areas. Family Express takes pride in terms of our employee training. It's not necessarily on-the-job training. All of our associates come to our corporate headquarters in Valparaiso. It's four days of training. We treat, we treat that as a career. I know in some, some places, people view jobs working at a convenience store differently. We do it differently in the sense that for our associates, it's, for many, it's a career choice and they're very proud of doing. And we're looking to have those jobs available here in Marion. I know, again, our last store, Ligonier, we've reached out to the community there and tried to, to have folks living in the community work, work in our stores.
Great, great job answering that. Last question, sorry, I have a bunch. That alley that kind of intersects in between there, who's going to be responsible for paving that? How is that going to look with the parking lot?
We, I mean, we're paving the entire lot. And so all the costs or expenses for that and maintaining the, I'm sure in terms of snow plowing or other maintenance of that, we're going to be more on top of it. Not that the city of Marion would not be, but in terms of our desire, I'm sure we'll be out there as quickly as possible to make sure any impediments for access to that, that alleyway are taken care of.
Perfect. And just want to make sure there is, is it in writing? I mean, are we protected as a city as far as just the maintenance of that? So you're basically going to, it's going to look like a full parking lot. However, you're, with the understanding that that strip that you're maintaining is still city property, correct?
That's correct.
Great, thank you. Answer my questions. Any other council members? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. If nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we pass general ordinance 29, 2025, on to second reading, public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Calgill, second by Councilman Brunner, to pass general ordinance 29, 2025, to second reading, public hearing. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Abstain.
Four dice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Devine.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes, general ordinance 29, 2025 will go to second reading, public hearing. And that's it for the agenda, except for two announcements. One's listed, the next town hall meeting for the mayor that he's having is November 5, 2025, at Real Community Covenant Church, 1240 South Adams. Appreciate the mayor doing that. And those of you that, you know, have questions and want to know about, more about the Elevate Marion and these, these projects that are ongoing, that is probably, I could say, one of the best resources, best, best places to go to get more information and be able to ask questions directly to the mayor. So. 6 o'clock, yep, 6 p.m., November 5. That is tomorrow, at Real Community Covenant Church. So highly encourage you to attend those town hall meetings with the mayor sharing the vision. Last one, it's not listed, and I thanks the Councilman Kane for, for bringing this up again, but I'll put on the next agenda. The Cops and Kids, the Brian Sharp Memorial Foundation for Cops and Kids, it's a pulled pork fundraiser. They are raising money to, for the police officers to, to help provide Christmas for many of our youth in this community. They're having that pulled pork fundraiser Saturday, November 29, at the Grant County 4-H Building, from 5 p.m. to 8 p.m. And there's information online, too. It's on plenty of Facebook pages. This, the Marion Police Department Facebook page, et cetera. But please check it out and support the Cops and Kids. All the money goes towards the foundation that helps provide the, it's basically what I call a shop with a cop, where these kids get to go shopping with police officers and have a wonderful Christmas. So that's all we have for announcements. Any other council members with announcements? Thank you. Buy skateboards there, yeah. Or V M X. All right, no other announcements? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion or by Councilman Calgill to adjourn. I'll take the second by Vice President Fordice. Any discussion or objection? Madam Clerk, Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Four dice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Devine.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned, thank you.